And I'll call this meeting to order. Karen, can we have an agenda or have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gerard.
Here.
Councilmember Husnick.
Here.
Councilmember Munson.
Here.
Councilmember Bystrum.
Here.
Mayor Bain.
Here. I'll ask all of those that are able to please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Council, you have an agenda before you. I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Agenda is approved. We have open forum this evening. Is there anybody that has signed up? Open forum is your opportunity to discuss any items of your choosing with council, and there is nobody signed up tonight. We will move on to the consent agenda. We have a long consent agenda item or long consent agenda this evening, 6A through 6Z. I will entertain a motion to approve or any changes. Madam Mayor, can we take out 6B?
I'd like to remove M.
We have a request for B and M.
With that, I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda. A through A and then C through L and N through, what do we have, Z. Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda items approved. And moving to the regular agenda, item 6B, which is the meeting minutes from February 10th. Councilmember Munson, I'm assuming you'd like to abstain? All right.
Madam Mayor, I'd make a motion that we accept the minutes from February 10th, 2020, at the regular council meeting.
I'll second it. Motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Abstain. One abstention. Minutes approved. Next item is item 6M, which is the Resolution 3092001 for the no parking at the Leela Annex, First Street Southeast and Second Street Southeast. Councilmember Gerard.
Madam Mayor, thank you. I would like to see this modified and not have it banned 24/7 and do more like we have on 4th over by the elementary schools, which bans parking during school hours. And so that would change paragraph four to school hours versus at all times.
Look for input from staff, either Ryan, Patrick, Ryan.
Mayor City Council, I'm going to go off memory here. I just learned about, there were some questions about this a few minutes before the meeting. But my understanding and working with planning zoning was the conditions of approval of the planning commission meeting for the site improvements of this project were to require planning zoning to meet with the property owners and develop the constraints of the no parking resolution. And long story short, that's how we got here today. I could have touched base with Donovan in planning zoning to clarify for accuracy of everything, but my understanding is that he or an intern, you know, we lost the intern that started the process, then I think Donovan backfitted and finished it and met with the property owners to determine the no parking resolution constraint. So if you know something differently than per your change, I don't know that, but there's really, there could be flexibility in this. Back to your comment though too about the within school, I know there were comments publicly that planning commissioner city council that some of the night evening gatherings that happened there are also parking issues too, so I'm just neutral on this one. But we thought we had it worked out, the residents or from the meetings. I don't know.
It was my recollection that the concern was both early morning drop off and evening activities. And with the new school by Headwaters, a lot of those evening activities are going to be moving band concerts, et cetera, to the other campus. And I don't know if that's happened or not. So that was why I was looking more for, to line this up with the elementary schools. But I'm not going to push it real hard. I'm good either way.
I wonder if there's a, is there anything time pressing where this is, item is on the agenda this evening?
We can delay that till another meeting.
I would rather us cir, I would rather us table and circle back, at least with Donovan, to clarify what the feedback was of residents. I was part, I heard many of those conversations. It's my understanding, yes, a lot of those evening activities were moving to another campus, but I also appreciate that residents were still quite wanting as many parking restrictions as they could get. But I want to make sure that that's, whether that includes, you know, overnights and weekends as well, I think is a question that we should ask to confirm.
Madam Mayor, I'd make a motion that we table this resolution until the next reasonable date to revisit this at the full council level.
I'll second. Motion to table is made and seconded. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? And motion tabled. Patrick and Ryan, you have what you need for Donovan's for next steps.
Absolutely.
Perfect. Very good. Moving on to our regular agenda item, we have a presentation this evening from Forest Lake area schools. We have Superintendent Dr. Steve Massey here to give us an update on their strategic plan. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmembers, thank you so much for this opportunity. I promised to be relatively brief. As you know, with strategic plans, I could occupy an entire hour. I promise not to do that. Before I get started, however, I'd like to acknowledge the countless hours that member Husnick spends at our board meeting. Sam, thank you so much for your liaison to the school district. It is really valuable for us to have you there and appreciate your time.
Must have been because of the cookies.
Yeah, well, there you go. And I'd also like to recognize the really strong partnership that we have forged over the many years with the city and city staff. Our relationship with our resource officers and Chief Peterson's staff is really quite remarkable. Chief Newman and your staff on some of our situations and your work with us is really quite remarkable and critical to our work. I can't tell you the number of conversations I've had with Mayor Bain on different issues. So again, the partnership is really valuable to our work as a school district, so thank you. Jumping into our strategic plan, we, we had a strategic plan that was written last in 2006. And you can imagine, a strategic plan written in 2006 was arguably written for a different day and a different time. And now that we have passed a bond referendum in 2015, an operating referendum in 2018, we felt that it was timely to jump back into the process to identify the path forward, charter our path as we move forward as a school district. And that is frankly exactly what the strategic plan does, does for us. We spent, before we jumped into the writing of the strategic plan, we spent a good four weeks in input mode, if you will. We had an external survey and internal survey with, as you can see here, almost over 800 respondents between an internal and external survey. We hired MSBA to facilitate this process, and their staff were shocked at the response we got on these surveys, both external and internal, which provided a really strong foundation to the work that we then set out to do with the strategic plan. We held 10 community staff listening sessions, seven focus groups, including students, business leaders, ministerial group, early childhood parents. We have a community education 50-plus group that we tapped into, parents involved in some equity work throughout the district. And then all of that work fed into a 40-member strategic plan, made up of our school board, staff, parents, and community. Councilmember Husnick was, was on that committee. Captain Greg Weiss was on that committee. And that led into logistics team and ultimately a writing team. We used, and we used six different focus areas that served our operating referendum planning after we were successful with our operating referendum. And you'll see in this plan, I think I'm going backwards. Here we go.
Next to the top?
Here we go. The 40-member strategic plan members that developed this plan used those six different focus areas as kind of the pillars and foundation. And that led into six or these belief statements that you see in front of you. I won't read those, but you'll see that they become core and foundational to our work throughout the district, from early childhood through 12th grade, our community education program, our athletics and activities program throughout. And you can see that at the very, at the very bottom, that the best interest of each student guides our decisions, and that is fundamental to our strategic plan. Our vision coming out of this strategic plan is excellence for every student, every day. And our new mission statement frankly replaces a 40, a really long paragraph mission statement that quite honestly, nobody within our system, and I have to admit myself included, could recite. This mission statement, on the contrary, is one that becomes operational because it's tangible, it's simple, it's direct, it's operational. Prepare and empower every student to thrive in and contribute to an ever-changing world. We're excited about that because it defines and begins to define our work and our path forward as a district. As I mentioned, there are six pillars, if you will, we call them focus areas, that guide their strategic plan. Along with each of these focus areas then are 10 different goals throughout those six areas with one to two, in some cases, three objectives related to each goal. The first focus area, excellence in high-quality education, driven by two goals there. And I'm not going to get into the objectives because that's getting into the operational plan, but the two goals there, achieve the goals of the world's best workforce for all students in the school district. The world's best workforce, replace No Child Left Behind, and it's Minnesota's version of the Every Student Succeeds Act, which is the federal regulation, again, that replaced No Child Left Behind. Second goal there is to attract and develop and retain high-quality and high-performing educators. The next focus area, excellence in equitable learning opportunities with one goal related to that focus area, identify and transform, and transform systems that contribute to inequities. So this is the first focus area. I'll jump to the next focus area. Again, identifying and transforming systems that contribute to inequities is the goal related to that focus area. The next focus area, develop and enhance each student's academic, excuse me, excellence in career, college, and future preparedness is the focus area. And there are two goals related to this. Develop and enhance each student's academic, technical, and professional skills to equip them and identify and preparing them for their career path. I'm going to pause there and bring you into a long and rich conversation the strategic planning team had on this specific topic. No longer is our work in public education or in schools in general, I would argue, preparing every, nor should it be preparing every student down a path for a four-year college. The jobs in career and tech ed are in high demand, the high skill required there, the high wages in those areas. So we were careful to develop in this area to include the technical, professional, career paths that come along with preparing kids for life after high school. And the next goal, engage students in learning systems that foster life skills both in and out of the classroom. The next focus area, excellence in fostering personal well-being in a safe and respectful environment. And one goal in that area, create a safe and inclusive learning environment that fosters personal well-being. The next focus area, excellence in collaboration with families, partners, and the community, and two goals. Provide communication that enhances collaboration between our schools and families, and seek out, enhance, and build family and community partnerships that meet the needs of each student. And lastly, excellence in communication and outreach, and two goals. Create a community of communities. We're a unique school district in that there are 12 different communities that make up our school district. Forest Lake is one of them. Scandia, Lynwood, Lionel Lakes, East Bethel, May Township, Wyoming, Columbus, and I know I missed a couple in there as well. It's 12 different communities that make up our school district. And our last goal with the plan, promote and celebrate the opportunities that make the Forest Lake School District an educational leader. So these six different focus areas lead into 10 goals, and you can see that there are related objectives. We're now entering the phase of developing action plans and strategies to meet each of these goals and objectives. And that'll be the operational side of this strategic plan. And I can assure you that this plan is energizing our system, it is chartering us down a new and exciting path as a district, as we move from a 2006 strategic plan to now a plan that is written for today and for tomorrow. I'll entertain questions in just a moment, but I wanted to take this opportunity and show you a video that we recently made.
This is Ranger Territory, the places and people that make up our community. This is where relationships come first, where we choose to engage, where we challenge our limits and find inspiration. We are many voices, but one community. Many passions, but one goal, to be the best we can be every day. We are on a journey from day one to day 2,223. A journey guided by the best teachers, a journey filled with opportunities we can only find here. This is our school, our place to dream, our hard work that pays off, and we protect it. When you're a Ranger...
You choose to be a Ranger.
You commit.
You are all in.
We are Rangers, and this is our territory.
So with that, thank you so much for your time. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Massey this evening?
I have one. I noted a lack of military in that kind of preparedness statement that's been there for years, and so I'm just curious as to what the rationale may have been.
Yeah, when we talk about life after high school in that second part of that, that is all the different options, whether it's technical, professional, either military or not, on the technical, professional side. So we felt that that was embedded there.
Okay.
Yep. Good point.
Yeah.
Yep.
Any other questions?
I just have a comment, if you don't mind. Dr. Massey, thank you for the opportunity to serve on this committee. There were a lot of smart people there, and I learned a lot.
Yourself included.
I learned a lot. Thank you.
So not a question for me, but just as you are deeper into the operational plans, let's keep the partnership going. Let us know how we can help.
Yeah, it's vital to our work.
Very well done.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, our next agenda item this evening, labor attorney appointment. Patrick?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Mayor, Council. As you know, last December, we, we received notice from our labor attorneys at Abrams and Schmidt that they were dissolving their firm. Fortunately, that came after all five of our contracts had been settled that year, so that was a blessing. Gave us an opportunity to take a look in and at least do a good search in a, in a time that we weren't rushed, unlike a golf course or garbage or something like that. So it was nice. We got a couple of recommendations from Abrams and Schmidt, and I also solicited the city administrator's list serve for other firms that may be of interest to, to us. After making a number of phone calls and number of emails, narrowed it down to two firms. One was our current bond counsel, whose name slips my mind at the minute, oh, Kennedy and Graven, and to Madden, Galton, and Henson LLP. So did an individual interview with both of those firms, sat down with, with them for an extended period of time to get their, to get the feel of how they approached labor negotiations, judge how prepared they were to talk about it. And my recommendation tonight is to appoint Madden, Galton, and Henson LLP the labor attorney for the city of Forest Lake. I have Susan Hanson in the audience. I'll be happy to have her come up and say a few words about their firm and their philosophy of labor negotiations.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. I'm Susan Hanson. I am a partner with the law firm of Madden, Gallanter, Hanson. Our firm practices exclusively in the area of representing public sector employers in labor negotiations and employment law. That's all we do. So we represent a number of cities, counties, and joint powers organizations throughout the state of Minnesota in labor negotiations and employment law matters. I've been an attorney with the firm since 1996. The firm has been in existence since the late 70s, back when Merrilee Abrams was general counsel with LALS. We had a number of cases against one another back when she was at LALS as well as Tiffany Schmidt. So I've known both of them since the late 90s, and I have a lot of respect for both of them. And one of our clients is the city of Maplewood, where Merrilee is mayor. And so I appreciate their recommendation and, and have had good working relationships with them, both when they were on the union side and then on management side. From a philosophical standpoint, in my experience, oftentimes, goals can be achieved in contract negotiations through a respectful, courteous, solution-oriented approach. I'm not a table pounder. I'm not a yeller. If that's what you're looking for, I'm probably not the right person. I respect the fact that the city has longstanding relationships with its employees. And so while labor councils come in to represent you in contract negotiations every two or three years, I respect the fact that you have longstanding, permanent relationships with many of these employees. And so in my experience, by being focused on solutions, by trying to identify common interests, oftentimes, you can identify means to achieve those common interests. It can take some time. It can require some thinking outside of the box, but in my experience, that's most effective. And I think when employees feel respected at the table and feel as if they truly are heard, oftentimes, I, I believe that goals are achieved through that process. And so that's essentially my philosophy. How I work in contract negotiations, I like to meet with either the council in close session or the city administrator prior to contract negotiations to get a sense of what your priorities are, what your parameters are, so that I have that understanding coming into contract negotiations, either through a close session or through meetings with city administration. I like feedback from department heads, if there are any areas of the contract that have been particularly hard for them to administer, if there have been any areas in the contract that have created grievances historically, maybe through ambiguous contract language, so that we can approach negotiations to try to address and solve some of those problems, hopefully before a grievance is even filed. I like to, as part of the contract negotiation process, then develop written negotiation proposals so that city administration and department heads can, can be familiar and comfortable with those documents in advance. We gather relevant market data, not only on economic items, but also on contract language issues. And then also, we work with so many of, of the unions that represent the cities, your city and cities throughout the state of Minnesota, that we have longstanding relationships with most of the business agents and individuals who represent them in contract negotiations. So it's, it's typically not a surprise what issues come to the table. Through that process and through a respectful, courteous process, I found that contract negotiations are oftentimes successful and, and your goals are achieved through that means. We also, in addition to handling contract negotiations, we also advise on various labor relations and employment law matters. And so as part of that advice, as issues come up, perhaps there are issues regarding policy interpretation, contract interpretation, maybe there is a training need. We provide training to a number of our clients on performance management, supervisory training, respectful workplace issues, discrimination issues, a variety of different training modules that our office provides to clients, really with the goal of getting ahead of issues before they turn into problems, before they turn into grievances, and before they turn into a complaint or litigation. I try to, and I try very hard to get ahead of an issue before it's a problem, before it's a grievance, before it's a lawsuit. That's generally my goal. That's what we do. We also, you know, oftentimes, if, if discipline is, is necessary, we advise on disciplinary issues. We handle a lot of grievance arbitration hearings for clients as well as interest arbitration hearings for clients in the event something like that is necessary. We represent a number of cities throughout the state of Minnesota as well as counties. I've provided a list of references to, to the city. And so if you have any questions for me regarding our work, what we do, I'm, I'm happy to answer any of those questions.
Thank you. Council, any, any questions for Ms.
I don't think so. Just to comment, I, as I was reading through the contract and you just, you reflected it in just, you know, what you had to say to council right now, I was struck by that pathway. I felt really good about our last round of contract negotiations with staff, and it's my wish to see that continue. I think we landed right in that very place, respectful dialogue and a fair contract in the end for, for each one of our bargaining units. So I'm really glad to hear that's going to continue. Thanks.
Any other, any other questions?
No questions from me either, just, just similar comments of council member Bystrum. Appreciate the approach that you've outlined, but certainly my philosophy as well, and those relationships are incredibly important. So whatever we can do proactively to have, renewal is never easy, but whatever we can do to have a smooth renewal, and that, to me, that's something that's managed throughout the duration of the contract. So appreciate your perspectives.
Absolutely. Okay. Thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity.
Excellent. Council, any questions of staff on the proposal in front of us?
Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
You know, numerous times it was mentioned how well contract negotiations went this past year with all of the different groups. Besides the normal hiccups with having to use a new firm, do you feel that both of these firms kind of work the same way as far as how they go about getting to the end result?
Absolutely. The discussions we've had with Susan, it was really abundantly clear what their philosophy was, how the negotiations would go. They mimicked what I also thought the way things should be going when there's no table pounding, tried to solve the problems, tried to solve the problems before they start, after they start, all of it. So we were pretty much in, in philosophy lockstep. And Tiffany Schmidt, who was our prior labor attorney who went through the, the five contracts, also lockstepped. She was a good negotiator. She was a good contract writer, and I don't think there'll be any falloff or you won't see any difference in changes in this at all. I think it'll, hopefully, and... I think it'll, hopefully, and I believe it will, go as smooth as it was last time. Whenever we get there, like two years from now, I think it is, so.
Thank you.
I will entertain any other questions or a motion?
I just have a point of clarification before I make a motion. Do we move to approve Susan Hanson or just the firm? Susan Hanson as a part of the firm or just the firm?
I would say the firm because as a whole, yes.
Okay, all right. All right. I make a motion to appoint Madden, Gallanter, Hanson, LLP as the city's labor attorney.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Thank you for being here. Patrick, our next agenda, item seven C, we have an Ellers proposal for a ten-year financial plan?
Yes. In your pack, it is a proposal from Ellers to begin work on a ten-year financial plan. We have identified this as a top priority within the organization is to put together a ten-year plan that reflects our financial needs, as well as our operational needs and our infrastructure needs. Obviously, we can't have an infrastructure plan or a equipment plan without knowing how to finance it. In addition to looking at those major things like capital improvements and equipment, but also they will look at where we go with debt and debt policy, how to use it most effectively, what projection of the general fund and what it will take to support the general fund and the operations in the next 10 years, you know, protect, protect or improve the city's bond rating and so forth. It's an important step in the organization. It'll give us a guidepost we'll need for 10 years. Now, obviously, a ten-year plan is only good, you know, it's not good for 10 years, really, but it does still give you the guidepost. Five years from now, I'd come back and say, let's update this thoroughly, whereas every year, we should be updating this thoroughly based on any situations that change or any or items that may come up to impact a ten-year plan. But it'll give this council and future councils, this staff and future staffs guidelines and an idea where we should be going, what it's going to cost, and how to approach some of the issues that faces the city. I mean, we all know the roads and what shape they are, the water, the sewer, but we should also look at staffing needs and we should also look at what happens to the property tax rate every year and how that's going to be impacted over the next 10 years. So that's the, that's the whole kind of crux of the matter. The cost of the study is nineteen thousand five hundred, not to exceed that amount. Ellers is proposing to charge an hourly rate, just in case they don't have to use that number. It could be lower than that, but it will be no higher than the nineteen five. We haven't budgeted for that officially in the 2020 budget. However, since this is so tied to the capital improvement plan, we have enough money to fund that out of the capital improvement fund. That's why I would recommend that coming. We could also then, if that's not the case, we could split it between the water fund, sewer fund, and capital fund. It just depends on where we're at. But right now, I think we have plenty, plenty of funding in the capital improvement plan to fund this. And like I said, those two things are tied very closely because we won't be able to go much further on paving and upgrading our infrastructure without some kind of a plan that recognizes the financial needs. So that's the, that's the summary. If you have questions on the actual text of the plan, I'll be happy to try to answer those as best I can.
Thank you. Counsel, questions of staff, comments?
So this is not going to compromise anything in that capital improvement fund?
It will not, no.
Okay. So I was, I'm kind of glad to hear there's some options there potentially. And then my other question was, I noted the bullet points regarding general fund pavement improvement, and I saw parks, trails, and lakes kind of penciled in there. Will that be added to the list as well?
Well, and I penciled, and that's my notes on the original that got copied. One of the, one of the things we, I believe we will look at parks, lakes, and trails, but I think we'll have to kind of pencil that in initially. I think I've talked about this before. I believe that the parks, lakes, and trails need a needs assessment to know what we need, and that's going to take longer than this next year to find out what that need assessment is. So there's two things. Usually what will happen is a needs assessment with parks, an inventory of what the parks are, and then try to figure out what the community wants in the future of parks. We will not be able to get that done in the same time period as the initial ten-year plan, but somewhere down the road, we will address all of those, budget for possibly a needs assessment and/or a citizen-wide survey or something along those lines. We haven't got that far. And then we'll have to update that plan and slot those in. So I just wanted to make sure, when I was reading through this and thinking about it, that I didn't forget parks, lakes, and trails. It wasn't spelled out in the study, but it's going to have to be melted in there somewheres in the future.
Because we do have some data that would allow us a little bit of a baseline in some areas for consideration potentially?
Right. We have some, we have some projects that are on the drawing board right now, Belt's Park and some other things, but it would be short-circuiting or short-cutting the parks, lakes, and trails if we did not look at that in a more comprehensive manner and try to include that in the future.
And then where does the airport land in here?
The airport is not in here for improvements.
Okay.
The airport is, right now, a self-sustaining or should be close to being a self-sustaining entity. If the council ever wants to have a discussion on whether we should be bonding or using property taxes for the airport support, that would be a discussion I would ask you to have before we include it in any ten-year plan.
So just to piggyback on council member Baistrom's questions, so the airport infrastructure capital improvement plan is out of scope, but part of the airport conversation has been around, one of the topics on the last workshop was potential general fund subsidy of airport in the future. So this certainly would help to illustrate what the availability or impact would be of that, correct?
Yes.
So it's not in scope, but it certainly helped, might inform some of those decisions? Is that a correct assessment?
Correct. I mean, what this should tell you is what is going to happen with the general fund, what will happen with the tax levy on the next 10 years. And then, okay, so say you got, the council believes that there should be some kind of a contribution to the airport fund from the general fund or from the tax levy, which would attempt that we could add that and show what that impact was, or at least calculate that pretty quickly.
Can we say the same thing related to parks? So for example, we have, you know, current, current build-out and current financial situation at Fenway Field. But certainly, there's always conversation about expansion. And so while we may not have full expansion dollars, certainly, this plan would help to provide
For Fenway Field.
Kind of the guidance around helping to inform those decisions? Is that appropriate, we have looking at this?
Yes, yes. It would, it would, should identify what kind of dollars we have available, but again, slotting parks, trails, and lakes later is the goal. Because not only Fenway Field, but, you know, you've got a whole south side that's going to need, that eventually will fill up, and we should be identifying where those parks are, where that land is, maybe even possibly purchasing that land before it goes away so that you have those parks, because once the land's gone, it's gone, even though you usually try to get the developers to add on to that. There may be necessity to actually be a little more aggressive, depending on what the build-out looks like and things like that, so.
Okay. That clarification is helpful. Other questions? Staff clarifications?
Just personally, I think this is long overdue. I think this will be a gift that we will, I would expect us referencing this, a gift will pay for, by the way, but this will be a tool that we will use over and over and over again, and reach for repeatedly, and can't imagine life without it. And in my mind, so in my mind necessary, and in my mind, Ellers is the right firm to do it.
I firmly believe Ellers is the right firm to do it. They're an exceptional financial organization that gives us great guidance.
Patrick, I would imagine a plan like this allows for more transparency with the residents when they ask what, what we're saving for, what we're planning for.
Absolutely.
We get a lot of questions about that, and I think it's also perfect timing with our strategic planning that we just finished trying to figure out how do we
Yeah, and so our challenge is to work with Ellers to get the financial set, but also to work with staff and fill in, I mean, we've got a lot of the capital needs and the equipment needs, and we just have to fill in the rest of those, whether it's, you know, a new public works building, or it's a new water tower, or whatever the case, those all have to be slotted in. Now, what they'll look at, you know, obviously, the water and the sewer kind of run independently because they're user-based and fed through fees, but they will be part of that plan. They'll show you, should start to reflect what you might have to do with fees in the future for those funds. That's my expectations. So we will actually, instead of walking into your budget every August blind, you kind of have an idea of where we should be going. And again, only adapting, things have changed dramatically, or they changed a little bit, depending on what, what the climate of the, you know, economy could tank and it would change it all, but at least you have some guidelines. It's, again, it's a guideline. It's not an exact roadmap, but it's a guideline that you'll be using and should be using for a while.
Any other questions? Or if not, I will entertain a motion?
Madam here.
Yes.
I'd make a motion to work with Ellers to develop a long-term financial plan, not to exceed nineteen thousand five hundred dollars.
Is a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Next item this evening is item seven E, I'm sorry, seven, I have a little bit of a difference here. D?
D is a delta?
Thank you, seven D. The resolution three nine twenty zero four, which is the donation of one hundred dollars from Charles and Mary Howe for the fire department. Chief Newman, anything you'd like to add?
I would just like to thank them for the donation.
Excellent. Very well. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved, with gratitude. Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Thank you so much. And next is seven E, which is the commission appointments. These were sent to council as well this morning. We have one appointment, and this will leave us with just one remaining open appointment on our boards and, our boards and commissions. I would like to appoint Betty Geyer to the Parks, Lakes, and Trails Commission. I had an opportunity to review Betty's application qualifications, had an opportunity to have a conversation with her, and also I'd like to add that she came highly recommended from Parks, Lakes, and Commission Chair Terry Steamblock, and that weighs a lot in my decision as well. And so I present for, make a motion for council approval, the approval of Betty Geyer to Parks, Lakes, and Trails. So moved. A motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. And that leaves us just one remaining spot on the planning commission. We do have a number of applicants for that, for that position, and hope to get that turned around here to council very soon. Final item on our agenda this evening is ACE hardware invoices. I will entertain a motion to approve.
Madam, may I make a motion to approve the ACE hardware invoices?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Oppose. One abstention. Motion carries. Very good. Staff updates this evening. Chief Peterson?
Yeah, Mayor and city council members, good evening. Earlier this year, I mentioned that I wanted to give you an update on the police calls for service that we took last year. As you know, the Washington County Sheriff's Office upgraded their records management system in 2018. Now that the system has been in place for two years, it has given us a much more accurate picture of the calls for service our department responds to each and every year. In 2018, our department handled eighteen thousand sixty-five calls for service, while in 2019, we handled twenty thousand five hundred and twenty-two calls for service. So this is an increase of twenty-four hundred calls for service, which is just over a twelve percent increase. To give you an idea on some of the top calls for service, I mean, these are broken down into hundreds of different calls for service. So I'm not going to bore you with all that list, but I thought the top nine might be a little interesting for you. We had a hundred and fifty-six gas drive-offs, two hundred and ninety-eight vehicle lockouts, three hundred and seventy-seven thefts of property, five hundred and twenty animal complaints, six hundred and thirty-eight business or residential alarms, six hundred and forty-two motor vehicle crashes, six hundred and forty-six domestic or civil disputes, fifteen hundred medical-related calls, and believe it or not, it was actually fifteen hundred. What's that?
Fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred. And we had three thousand one hundred and thirty-two traffic stops. Some of those had, did result in violations or citations, some did not. As you know, all of this, and those are just the top nine, happen in a city that's only thirty-six square miles and has a very large lake in the middle of it. So just wanted to give you an update that we are staying busy, and I'm really glad that we have this record, records management system in place. It took a long time for it to develop and for them to roll it out, but it really gives us a very accurate picture of what our officers are doing. And that's all I have for you tonight, unless you have some questions for me.
Any questions for chief?
Are you able to email that out, a summary of that? I'm writing like crazy here, but
Yeah, I was actually going to mention that. I saw you all writing some things down. And I can also put together, you know, a more of a graph, some other things that this records management system allows us to do. And if at some point, you know, you want a little bit longer, you know, presentation with that information so the public can see it, I can definitely do that at some point as well.
That'd be a good idea.
Yeah, I think, it'd be great to see that detail. I think it'll prompt some good conversation. Three things that jump out at me at what you just said. So one is my concern on your number two of fifteen hundred medical calls and potential impact to that and what that means with the changeover in ambulance service providers. I know that's already on your radar. Something for council to keep in mind. And then animal, well, I guess this is, this is maybe my minor concern. I'm surprised animal complaints is, you know, like number six on your list. Then theft in, theft in vehicle lockouts, and I'm wondering if there's something we can do.
Oh, okay.
Not, not lockouts.
Drive-offs.
Gas drive-offs.
Gas drive-offs, yeah.
You know, those are retail crime, and I get we're a retail community, and that's high volume, and be good to dive a little further into that.
Do those people get caught?
In the gas drive-offs?
Yeah.
You know, I don't know what the percentage is, but a lot of them are just sometimes mistakes. Somebody drives off and they might come back a few, you know, a little bit, little later and just look like, oh, I always use my credit card or my debit card, and I just realized I didn't, and I was going to pay cash, and I drove off. Sometimes it's just a quick phone call, calling somebody, and they come back and they're like, I'm so sorry. Other times, yeah, or I should say, the majority are true gas drive-offs. Very difficult to find the individual sometimes because might not have a license plate, might not have got a view of the person, they might not have a really good video surveillance. So those things all come into play.
Sure. But it's still a call, no matter how you look at it.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It can be a timely, it takes a while, right?
Yeah.
Of gathering that information, and it's, the investigation string on it can be some time. So worth, you know, presenting certainly further and then, you know, diving a little deeper on some of those specific topics that council may have questions on, or may want to hear your thoughts on how we're addressing. And certainly, to me, it's all about scaling for, you know, that twelve percent is, you know, if that, if next year's also twelve percent, how do we make sure we're, you know, prioritizing and handling that volume, so.
Yeah. And the, having this information at our fingertips the last couple of months really has generated a lot of discussion in regards to how do we handle gas drive-offs? How do we handle animal complaints, motor vehicle crashes, business and residential alarms? And those are some things that are probably going to be coming forward to you in the near future.
This is no reflection on the cops, okay? But the current day here in this city, and I hope this council can do something about it, is the speeding, particularly in the residential areas. And I'd sure like to see some way that we can fix that, because they do, they zip down these residential streets, and, you know, you can't have a cop on every corner, I understand that. But I'd like to see a lowering of the speed limits and, I don't know, some kind of proactive way of working on this, because it's getting to be an issue, you know? So, and I know you guys are doing all you can. I, I'm not beating you up over it, it's just the fact that it's out there, you know? So. So.
And definitely with the, you know, the weather, over the weekend anyway, but hopefully that type of weather will be coming back soon, later this spring, we'll definitely get the speed trailer back out there as well.
Perfect. Very good. Anything else for Chief Peterson? Chief Newman?
I have nothing for fire, but I did want to make a brief statement about coronavirus and Forest Lake emergency management. And obviously, if you looked at the stock market today, turned on the radio, watched the news, go on the internet, there's a lot of fear revolving around coronavirus. And over the last few months, and especially in the last few weeks, this has been a hot topic for emergency services. So, you know, we've talked with our partners, with the school district, North Ambulance, M Health, Washington County Emergency Management, Minnesota Department of Health, our mutual aid partners surrounding our community, and we all have plans. And we have adjusted our response plans to include coronavirus, and, you know, should we see an increase or an outbreak of this in our community, I would expect no interruption to our essential services in Forest Lake. We're also going to continue to monitor advisories from CDC, world health organizations for best practices, and, you know, we're asking the community to do the right things, washing hands, coughing, covering their mouth when they cough and sneeze, and staying home if you're, if you're sick. If you practice those best practices, that's going to help reduce the spread of the coronavirus. So, do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Chief? Thank you for being on top of it.
Yep.
Keep us posted as well.
Will do.
Thank you. Sandy?
Nothing more to add.
Very good. Karen?
No comments.
Very good. Patrick?
Just two things. We attended, Mayor and I, with Representative Detmer went to the House to testify before the Capital Investment Committee regarding the lift station project and the, the bridge overpass at Ninety-seventh Goodview. So, we'll see what the outcome of that is. Let me tell you, there's a lot of competition for those dollars, and a lot of very worthy projects that are, have been requested for both of those areas. The second thing is, I'd like to talk a little bit about golf, believe it or not. We are working diligently at getting the golf course open for the season. We have proposals right now in hand, well, almost in hand, one, from one operator, and we have a second operator that's coming up to visit tomorrow. They are both independent proposals, they both have good, bad, and different things in them. Hopefully, we'll make a decision by mid to late week. If all things come together, we've asked them for what a budget might look like, what their operations look like, what kind of equipment, whether we have to get it or they have to get it, and what it's going to cost us. I will warn you, there may have to be a subsidy to the golf course, at least this year, until we get, get our feet down and see what it really is. Again, being that we have a lot of incomplete information, we are struggling to, to have the proposals from the operators come back with accurate, accurate reports on what it's going to cost and what kind of profit. Obviously, the two firms that we, we have been talking to don't want to do this for free. So, we'll see how that goes, but hopefully, we will have that sometime this week. We may ask for a special session before the committee that holds or approve a contract, if that's, if we get that far. Hopefully, nothing later than the next, the second council meeting, but hopefully, maybe this Monday, just depending on how fast this goes, so. Jamie's been doing a great job. Dave's been working with Jamie and I. We were all kind of sitting down as a team and looking through all this different stuff that has to go with the golf course, so we'll let you know as soon as we know. That's it.
Very good. Any questions for Patrick?
No, I, I think I just add, Patrick, I think communication is in everybody's best interest on this issue. I know that we were able to get the letter out, and I think that was really, really helpful, but it didn't go to everybody, because not all league players are members, and not all members are league players. And so, if there is a way that we can do that, I know I requested an electronic copy of that, so that I can start distributing it to some folks via text, and they can kind of pass it along. I think that would really be helpful. You know, we, we will lose revenue, and I think we are already. And so, you know, I think it's in our best interest to be sure that we're communicating.
Yeah, and I think, just to respond, we've, we've communicated as best we can with the information that we have. We do not have the ability to SMS text anyone. It was my understanding that Jerry Mees' text list was not a list, but he did it individually, so that there's no way to do that. We don't have that ability yet in-house to do that, unless you use a personal phone. The names and addresses that we got, we sent out, it's hit or miss, and it's just, again, it's just having to do with the way, similar to garbage, we, we are kind of in the dark because of the way the operation was run. I think we've done well. I encourage all of the citizens watching and all the council members, if you know people who have questions or want to know information, one of the things we have noticed, we haven't been getting, nobody calling us. I mean, maybe four or five people at the most. We're here five days a week. If you have people texting you, emailing you, complaining on social media, tell them to call Jamie, tell them to call me, we'll, we'll give them an answer, we'll tell them what's going on. Again, like I said in the last few meetings, there will be golf, there will be leagues, there will be memberships, it's just we have to get it all together. But we, right now, we don't have an operator to do it, and we can't do it ourselves yet, so we're working on it.
Is it, is it, is it a reasonable solution to get a copy of that electronically?
Of, yeah, oh, sure, of the letter?
Yes.
Oh, absolutely.
Yes. Because they'll take care of it for us, if we can start distributing it that way.
Just chiming in real quick on next steps for golf. I do think it's important that, I appreciate that there is a tight timeline, but I also appreciate that we may be going into a multiple-year contract, recognizing somebody who's new may not want a one-year contract.
Well, yes.
And that will have some ongoing impact to Parks, Lakes and Trails, and so I want to make sure that we're bringing them along with us, and not just leaping over, because this will have operational considerations. They've done a lot of work on strategy. Now, granted, that was done when everyone was happy with the current provider, and the current provider was a going concern, and we, you know, we, we, that wasn't on radar, but I want to make sure that we're bringing them along. And so, I would recommend that that be a joint workshop, when we're able to have a special meeting, recognizing ultimately, it's a council decision, but want to make sure that they're brought along.
Yeah, absolutely. And you are correct, it may need to be a multi-year contract. That's just, you know, they don't want to start and gear up for a year and then leave, right?
Agreed.
So, it'll have to be that. We don't know if it'll be two years or three years. It'll be probably a minimum of two years, probably three, maybe even five. And again, it's, it's just getting somebody in here who's running the course differently, running it effectively, and the model that we had here, we were lucky, it's not sustainable. You know, we have to have somebody in here that can have a sustainable model, or run a golf course ourselves, if we can do that, a sustainable model, which, right now, we can't even do that, because we don't know enough about it. The nice part about getting somebody in is that if we can get somebody in, similar to the garbage, that gives us accurate information, accurate lists of names and address, accurate phone numbers, actual email addresses, then we can, if we have to eventually do something in-house, we can do it, but right now, we can't even do that, so.
Any other questions for Patrick?
I have one more, Mayor Bean. We received an email from the League of Minnesota Cities about the building permit fees.
Yes.
Are we responding to that?
I've responded already.
Okay, good.
I've responded to Representative Detmer, who is on the House Committee of Labor that controls that. The proposal from the League of Municipalities, they want to change the permitting and inspection fees to a square-footage fee instead of a value fee, which is a tremendous difference in scale. Just imagine inspecting a house and a garage at square foot compared to a school, or a Menards, or a Target, and with complicated systems in them these days, square footage, you, we would, we would not be doing well. Value is, is, you know, we, Forest Lake isn't one of those communities that overcharge. I mean, there are examples of other communities that maybe make a lot of money on these. We don't make a lot of money. We're pretty, almost break even on some of this stuff. If it's a good year, obviously, we do, but then, that can make up for some of those bad years when we, when we still have staff, but we're uncut making. So, I have responded to, to Representative Detmer regarding that. If you, if you wish to respond to him or to the rest of the House, please do. It would be a very bad change for Forest Lake if we had to charge for building permits and inspections on a square-foot basis. It'd be a disaster.
Very good. Well, first of all, before you, I'm going to interrupt you before you start. Welcome, and also would like to just publicly thank Bridget for her time. Bridget, if you're watching this, we talked in person, but just want to publicly extend the, and I hope Bridget's doing something far more fabulous than watching Forest Lake City Council meetings now, but really appreciate her time and her service to the city of Forest Lake. We look forward to continuing the relationship that we have with Lavender Miller, and you know that we are in good hands, and so welcome aboard.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. Your Honor, Council, I don't have a report tonight, other than to say that I'm honored to be here. I look forward to working with the council and the staff, and on behalf of Bridget, I'd like to express her heartfelt gratitude for the opportunity she's had to work with you. I know that she might be watching this, because she misses you.
She's probably checking to see if you're doing as good a job.
Her next community is lucky to have her, yes.
Well, welcome aboard.
Welcome, thank you.
Absolutely.
Ryan?
Mayor City Council, nothing specific to report, unless you guys have questions about anything.
Anything for Ryan? Dave?
I can't believe I'm saying this on March ninth, but we had two street sweepers out today, sweeping streets already, so that's.
Wow.
Probably the earliest we've ever been out, taking advantage of the nice weather. The weather stays good, we'll still be projecting compost site opening probably the first weekend in April. If folks have stuff to compost right now, the Washington County site is open on Saturdays from ten to three during the off-season, so if they would need to get rid of a trailer full, or something like that, that, that's an option for them until we open. We do have a contractor, fingers crossed, coming in this weekend to start chipping that pile of wood, so we're just going to wait until that gets knocked down, and then we can open up. So, we don't really want to open until that's gone. It's, it's pretty, pretty tight in there now, so. Other than that, I don't have anything else. Let's see, you have something for me?
Anything for Dave?
Oh, just one other thing to add, road restrictions are on. They went on Monday morning, oh, Friday, Friday morning at midnight, so we have it all posted, so if you see any big vehicles driving around that shouldn't be, let me know, and we'll chase them down. We don't offer permits or exemptions. The only things are fire trucks, or garbage trucks that can drive around, but other than that, we don't have any, any exceptions or permits. That's it. Thanks.
Councilmember Gerard?
Thank you. First, I want to start with, I participated at the Lake Association's Forest Lake Ice Cleanup this weekend. Thank you to the fire department for starting us out with a safety, reminding us where and where we should not go, you know? We're not necessarily the brightest cleanup group. And thank you for a number of businesses, they really helped out. We had Vanelle's, Robert's Funeral, and Forest Lake Floral, gave beverages and lunch afterwards, so it was very nice of them, and then Remax, and Keller William also participated. And it was good to report that there was not near the garbage on the lake that there has been in previous years.
Oh, it's good.
So, it went pretty quick, and it was well-attended by a fair amount of people from the Lake Association, so it was a good time, which they had by all. I also attended a planning commission meeting, it was just a parking lot variance, and then they reappointed Eric Langness as the chair, and Susan Young as the vice chair of the planning commission.
Thank you. Councilmember Rundson?
The last FLA meeting, again, fell during a city council workshop. I think we're done with Monday holidays, scheduled council meetings. But Jamie reached out to me today to say that a draft agreement will be ready soon from the city for FLA, and the Fenway Advisory Committee, which Councilmember Baishman and I sit on, should be meeting sometime in the next two weeks. The only other thing that I had, and Councilmember Husnick alluded to it already, with, I had a few people, more, more than normal, reach out about the, the speeding, and again, know that you guys can't be everywhere all the time, and I don't know if it's the, like you said, the weather, but North Shore Trail has been really bad lately. I'd say probably just in the last two to three weeks, maybe because the ice isn't there anymore, but just, I, and especially what was the, around the Heath Avenue area, and I let folks know that I would, I would let you know during council, so thank you for what you do, though.
Councilmember Baishman?
I don't think much more from me. I, you know, had kind of coronavirus and emergency operations plan on my list to see where we were at status-wise with that as a city, and what our response was, or what the plans were potentially for that, so it's good to hear that you've been in communication with all of those entities. Just a couple of things to mention, the Legion is going to have their Fourth of July fundraiser, Fish Fry fundraiser, and Pie in the Eye coming up on Friday, March twenty-seventh, and then the Vietnam Veterans Day, again, the Legion this year is typically a really wonderful event, and that's on March twenty-ninth, again, at the, at the Legion, and that starts at two P.M. So, I just wanted to get those out there publicly.
Very good. Councilmember Husnick?
Thank you. I attended the school board meeting, which took place March fifth at seven P.M., and not, nothing really out of the ordinary. They go through their reports just like we do, and that sort of thing, and their consent, consent agenda. The notable thing really is the fact that they collect eleven thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars in donations, and that's pretty typical. So, kudos to the folks that make those donations, and are for all, all different things. It could be for athletic equipment, or music, or helping out with the food, and that kind of thing, for students. So, there's a lot of good people out there taking care of business, and, and so, the rest of this stuff, I mean, is student fees and current policies, and I can't quote all of them, that's all there is to it, so. But, and then, I also attended the Airport Commission meeting, which took place last Wednesday, and, and it was more of less a follow-up from our workshop meeting the other night, and we're working on our AOP, so we can get that finalized, so we can look towards state funding for, to be able to get more hangars in place there. So, what happened is, the engineers came up with about three or four different options. All the commission members now are going to look at those options, bring them back to a meeting on the twenty-fifth, and we're going to try to come, come to consensus that we can put into that AOP, and, because you only get, there can only be one, so. And then, we're also going to be working on the airport guidelines to get some things cleaned up and squared up there, so. And that's going to, the guidelines thing came up at that last meeting, however, we're going to try to get it pinned down on, on March twenty-fifth. We did ask for another meeting on the twenty-fifth, because the engineers wanted to get things rolling with the state of Minnesota, and, so we just wanted to come to some agreements, so we're going to have it on the twenty-fifth. We couldn't do it on a regular, which would normally have been the first Wednesday in April, some other conflicts. So, it's going to be on the twenty-fifth, on Wednesday, I believe, the twenty-fifth, so that's all I have. Thanks.
Very good. Quick updates from me, quick reminder about, from, a quick update from the EDA, and council should have all received an invitation to participate in the downtown committee kickoff meeting, and that is next Monday at five-thirty upstairs in the community room. That is an open meeting to any stakeholder who is interested. Invitations have gone out to all nominees that came from council, that came from the EDA, business owners, different community groups, think Rotary, Lions Club, groups like that. And there was a pretty active solicitation list on who should be at the table, but also let's keep in mind that, that the goal is to have the right people at the table, and so if we're missing anyone, we can certainly be adding on as we go. The outline for next Monday will be a broad overview to set the stage, objectives, SWOT analysis, what, what is the, kind of the timeline going to look like for the next sequence of activities, recognizing that not everybody in that room is going to want to be at every single meeting, and giving folks an opportunity to understand overall goals and timelines, so that they can opt in and out as they choose, as we're talking about topics that they are interested in. So, look forward to a very active and good session next Monday. Also, we received an, the first quarter CBRE report on our Headwaters one twenty-three parcel. That update is in the EDA minutes, and if you're. That update is in the EDA minutes, and if you're interested, I would encourage you to take a look at it. It reflects all of the interests that, and the inquiries that have come in so far related to that parcel. Happy to report that we are part of a package being presented by the state of available opportunities, and so that's a nice list to be on. It's nice activity, and we've had good first quarter of activity from the listing agent, so look forward to more activity there. Also, as Patrick mentioned, we had an opportunity to present with Representative Detmer to the House Capital Investment Committee. We were there Wednesday evening to present on our wastewater project, and we were fortunate enough to be invited the second day on Thursday morning to present on our pedestrian bridge. We made it clear to them that our pedestrian bridge was our top priority. Would also like to thank Washington County Chair Fran Miron and our local District One County Commissioner Fran Miron for also being in attendance and supporting those efforts, and also Dr. Massey joined us while we spoke about the pedestrian bridge to express his support as well and the school district's support for that project. There are, so the House bill on the wastewater project is HF 3615. There is a companion bill that has been introduced by Senator Housley that is Senate Bill 34, or 3545. The pedestrian bridge is House Bill 3613, and the companion bill also presented by Senator Housley is Senate 3643. So, as I understand, next steps, the investment committee was meeting in two different sessions this week to discuss prioritization. I will tell you, we were number 27 of about 35 proposals presented on Wednesday evening, and we were number seven of about another 15 presented on Thursday morning. Competition is stiff. Many communities had been at this for multiple times. We heard lots of, "This is, it's good to see you again, as we said last time, here is our request." So, we may also be back, and also, if you look at the magnitude of project scope and the need that is out there, we have need, but again, the competition is quite stiff. So, I'm happy to see that we passed tonight the 10-year financial plan package because I just have a sense that some of these projects is going to come back to us. Yes, we will continue to, you know, seek additional dollars as we can at whatever source, but just given the competition for those bond funds, some of the times, it's just going to come back to us in Forest Lake, taking care of Forest Lake, so we need to explore all of those avenues. And then, real quick, I haven't received any nominations for the Human Rights Exploratory Committee. I'd like to get that kicked off here in the second quarter, and so if you have anybody you'd like to see on that, remember, we, this was a one-year term, it's that interim term, it's that bridge position to get us from where we are today to a full Human Rights Commission, and I'd like to, again, get that kicked off here in the second quarter. So, if you have folks in your network you'd like to nominate, send them my direction. Anything else this evening? Not hearing anything, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm motioning to adjourn.
Motion and a second, no further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, nor adjourned.